And open the August seventh, two thousand forty-four Select Board Meeting. And before we start, I wanted to introduce Michelle. Um, she is our new Select Board straight-up assistant. Worked a few days, but she's took on running lots and questions in organizations, so. Welcome, Michelle.
You're welcome.
I'm excited.
We have any amendments to the agenda? I have two. I've received a request for a coin drop from the fire department and received some. Funds um. From the Hardwood area community coalition. Since they've been active for some time. Born has decided to close out all of our towns and they've decided to turn, return this money to the town since. The Hardwood area community coalition is impacted. And we look at the last census data and divided the money according to. Population of each town. For your past support of the Hardwood area community coalition mission. You'll find a check enclosed in the amount of six thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. So at some point, um, it's just coming on the agenda now. We'll have to pick up. Something special we want to spend it on with the, but we'll.
You want to talk about schedule?
And um, I wanted to talk about uh, the sand that. If you give that under the Select Board review action. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of July seventeenth, two thousand forty-four.
I'll second it.
Motion on the table. Do we have any further uh, discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? additions? additions? Hearing none then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Preparing. Comments from the community?
I, because I'm here and, and if you haven't helped yourself, have you gone? Put yourself away? But anyway, I just wanted to commend the board for um. Their, basically their. Strong. Functionality, there, there, you have really um. I noticed that the, the law has just changed so that. The meetings have to video. You've been doing it since the pandemic, never stopped. I want to commend you for. Having your meeting so accessible and open to everybody. And the website. That is up there is outstanding and all the minutes are there for anybody who wants to read them and. The fact that you're recording these meetings and there are bails or people, I, I think that. You are really setting a great example in the leadership in this town. Thank you.
Uh, any public comments from anyone online? On Mike Thomas?
Um, yeah, sorry, I missed it. It was in another room. You guys were talking about accessibility?
No, we haven't got there yet. Um, we have, we're in the public comment period and um. Monica Cross was commending the board for um, our access to. Using Zoom, our website, our minutes online.
Um, yeah, but um. The only way for people to know that you had this meeting tonight was to go online to uh, the website. So a little more outreach in the public would be nice.
So we are on number seven. We are going to do improving communications.
Awesome.
If you want to get into depth of that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll move on to the energy audit. Um, I'm afraid Michael is not able to join us tonight. He's on his way home. From Philadelphia. Um, he seemed to be a lead in having some ideas that we could. If he wanted. To maybe happen, especially with the town office. But I asked um, Tori to come tonight to kind of go over these audits with us. So that I, then she can tell us. What might be available out there for grants?
Okay, is that my cue?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for having me tonight um, to talk with you about. The free energy audits. Well, it had completed this summer at the town office and town hall. Um, the audits were supported under the municipal energy resilience program. Um, which the state offered to all municipalities um. Who were interested in assessing municipally-owned buildings to see where there might be some opportunities to improve. Energy efficiency and save on costs spent on utility bills and improve the comfort of municipal buildings. Um, so I believe you have before you the two audits that were done this summer for the town office and town hall. By Bureau Veritas. Um. And the reports start out with an executive summary of um, the recommended measures and. Um, estimated cost savings um. For different fuel types based on the measures the town might be interested in pursuing. Um, and I have the town office report in front of me right now, but if you. Turn to page five, there's a table that has a description of the different measures they recommend for the town office. Um, the same table is also outlined in the town hall report. But what I was hoping to review with you all tonight is the recommendations and. What the town might be interested in pursuing to improve energy efficiency at the buildings. Um, later this summer, the MRRP program also has an implementation grant that will be available. Um, there's no match associated with the grant. And the town can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars to implement some of these measures, so. Uh, it'd be really great to speak with the board more about what you might be interested in pursuing.
Do you have the opportunity to ever uh, touch base with Michael? On his.
Um. I, we played phone tag for a couple of weeks and I never actually got on the phone with him. I know for the town office, um, there was some interest in, in insulation. Um, the heat pumps and solar potentially. But I haven't heard about what might be of interest for the town hall.
And insulation, the insulation probably would be more required. And maybe even change a few windows if you have, it may be more efficient. With the amount.
So I did know in my discussion with Michael, he was concerned with the level of insulation in the forest. In the attic, he didn't feel it was appropriate, you know, that. I don't know if he was thinking about. Heat pumps more for. Heat or for like air conditioning? But he felt because heat pumps um. Consumed so much energy.
They also don't like really cold temperatures.
Right. Well, I, I'm not sure if he was um, thinking of having that instead of a. System. He's the contractor.
I think he was thinking insulation and the outside of building. Air leaks on it, like the windows and the doors and all that stuff.
Yeah, he, he did speak to me though about uh, heat pumps and. I mean, and uh. But that he was interested in some. Solar system. To help offset the.
Electricity?
For running the. I don't think we could rely on heat pumps for heating this building.
But summertime air conditioning might be the long thing.
See, as these are grants.
Everything will be considering the change next for us.
We have a bid for that. It's a little, it's about a year old. Um. We're just checking out to find if these particular pictures can support LED. It's, it's one question, but yeah, there's a bid for to not put in the tubes. Because we have a bid to put in the tubes, but maybe to see the, the canisters set, so.
And a few.
Yeah.
Yeah. That changes for me a little bit.
So we'll, we have a bid for roughly five. Yeah, it's, I think he'll grab a bid, but uh, it's a year old. Uh, but we are having him come and give us a bid maybe on the canisters too, just to see long-term. Is it easier and cheaper to replace those bulbs? So let's see what the uh, the cost benefit is. For the, the tubes versus canisters.
I thought, so we have to have LEDs. You can't buy the heavens anymore.
Right.
And there's so much.
So we have to change them anyway.
Right. There's so much project.
Kurt, did you tell them a grant out already? Have you written a grant, Kurt? You're muted. Begin your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was muted. Um, yes, we did some time ago. Um, that was preempted somewhat by the July flood. Um, and so there was um, there was an active grant out there. Um, this is to replace all the fluorescent bulbs um, in both the town office and the garage. So I can give you the. Details of that application uh, when we talk on Monday.
So we um, did install new lights in the town garage.
Uh, there's LEDs in the town garage now.
Yeah, well, that uh, we just got a recall on all of them.
Oh, there was a recall?
What happens is the pins are melting in certain units. They were installed in plastic pins instead of metal, so they're melting and they're causing then. The, the structure to fall a little bit and then it's, it's heating up the glass or the. So we have a, we have a recall in. There's no way. I went online to see. Any way to find out if we could get um. Pay for it ourselves and they would reimburse us, but no, we have to have their inspections come out. And actually do the replacement of the pins. Um, and I don't know where we are on the final list because there's nobody to talk to. You just go around.
Well, I guess just from the MRRP reports, I'll also point out some columns that might be of interest if you didn't notice already. Um, all the way to the right. Of the recommended measures, there's a column for total estimated annual cost savings. For implementing that, um, as well as the payback period. So how quickly the measure will pay for itself. Um, so those. Values might also help. Guide some decisions. Um, I also know that the State Department of EGS, who's administering the program. Um, is encouraging towns to do things like insulation, um, because that's a good first step. If you are considering heat pumps down the road or other. Um, transitional technologies that'll help extend the useful. Life of the technology in the future.
We applied for a grant uh, to do a project. Can we then? Apply again for a different one or should we just apply? For everything at once?
Uh, this. This particular grant program is funded through ARPA funding, so it's only going to be available. This one time, but this report can be used as the basis for any future grant requests. So it's really just up to the town. Um, how much capacity you have and what you're willing to take on for projects. I'll also add that LCPC has funding to support towns um, with, you know, applying for and. Supporting with project management activities if you're awarded grant funding. Um. But. This. Um, implementation grant is just. Um, this one-time offer kind of with the, the no-match and. To implement stuff in this report.
So this implementation grant is not available yet, so what you're saying?
Correct. They're supposed to announce it in the next few weeks. So I was, um, well, they said this summer and. They're supposed to in the next few weeks announce it, possibly September.
And um. Seeing it's ARPA funds, um, it must have a deadline and it has to be completed by.
Yes, now there, the state has to oblige funding by the end of this year and the projects will need to be complete by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Does the board want to wait until we uh, have Michael with us again as soon as he's a contractor to. Discuss what we might want to apply for?
I think it's a good idea.
So you've given us some background, um. Anything else you want to add, Tori?
Um, just the other detail to consider. Um, is the need to. Be more ADA compliant at the time of project completion as well. So. If you are awarded funding, um. There needs to be some ADA improvement measures that are encompassed in the project and up to twenty percent of your grant requests can be used to fund that improvement. But I'm happy to come back to the next Select Board meeting too to um. Chat more with you all about what you might want to decide.
So ADA compliant, does that mean the building needs to be ADA compliant or the project? I mean. Uh, I would imagine all our buildings are ADA compliant. Presently. I don't, I'm not sure how putting insulation is a matter of being, being a compliant. Oh, it gives there.
Yeah, for some reason, it was written into the statute that enabled the program. So Act one seventy-two has a provision that says the. The building needs to be more ADA compliant at the time of project completion. So. We also have a assessment checklist that I'm happy to walk around the buildings to see if there's any. Small improvements that might be able to be made, but there, it may be the case that buildings are fully ADA compliant. Um. It's just an opportunity to improve if there's any gaps.
So I imagine if this is a grant program, we're going to at least ask for something. So maybe it's. We should get. Cut, cut that assessment down and ready.
Okay.
Um. And then in our next meeting on the. Twenty-first, I think, um. Nail things down and I'll send Michael an email for him to be prepared.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm happy to work with you or perhaps Michelle um, to.
Yeah.
Walk, use the checklist and walk around the buildings to check things out.
Great, thank you, Tori.
Welcome. Thanks. Have a good night.
Good. Amy was going to come on. Is Kate coming?
Not sure. I haven't, uh, I haven't heard from her. I can definitely speak to the, the content, just.
Okay. So the forest plan and conservation approval, I was telling you that uh, data is in September fifth, tentatively for our closing. So we're. Getting down to the wire here with the last bit of, of paperwork. Presently, our terming is reviewing some of the closing documents. And uh, there's been a minor change to our. Forest appointment looking to the future, so I'll let. Tori and me on to see, discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're um, requesting that you approve a few updates to the forest management plan, the, the forest stewardship plan.
Perfect.
Um, the updates are um, basically there's three things. Um. The, the one is that we're incorporating the soil remediation plan. Um, which Stone Environmental has, has prepared. And this is, um, the way I understand it is it's, it's a technicality and it's. Um, moderately important because they did find some contamination on the Bedellia fossil. Um, if the town takes ownership of land with contamination on it, then you know, we have a, a, a liability going forward into the future and so. Um, you know, all the various organizations that are arranged to making this happen. Um, are very interested to make sure that we don't, uh, you know, that everything is completely cleaned up. Um, uh, and unkeep order before we take ownership. That said, um. The, there's. The whole thing has been held up um, for, you know, delays with the environmental review and so on, and we'd like to get this thing settled. Um, and so we're, we're proposing to go ahead. With a soil remediation plan. The reason, there's, there's a couple of things that are, one is depending on the level of contamination that was discovered in the, the secondary environmental report. Samples that Stone took um, earlier this summer. We could have, the, the outcome could have fallen on either side of the line. One was the side of saying, hey, this is really bad. It's going to be really expensive and difficult to clean up. And we should definitely get it completely cleaned up before we do the transfer of ownership. And the other side is, you know, it's not that bad. We're going to have the whole center back here and we put it into a, you know, to a regular landfill. Um, we could go ahead if, if there's a plan in place. Um, and a follow-up, part of the plan includes follow-up, um. You know, confirmation that the work gets done and that the site tests, tests out okay after the work. Then all the funding sources are, are willing to go ahead to get us to closing. On September fifth, um, about a month away with the, the soil remediation plan in place and the plan to execute the, the steps for it. So um, we want to do that. And we're putting the soil remediation plan into the stewardship plan. Um, so that's the major amendment. It's actually being incorporated into the stewardship plan. That's one thing. Any questions on that? Well. The second thing is, um, this was a little bit of a surprise to me, but um, not a big deal. Um, as uh, TPO was, was. Working on this amendment and also reviewing the conservation easements with the Eastman holders, um, primarily with uh, Vermont Housing and Conservation Bureau. They um, noted that the Eastman itself um, seemed to preclude building any kind of huts and um. Having uh, like overnight camping in the high. Now, it's something that has been part of the conversation since early on. It was not a high priority for the, the, in a forest committee or. Um, you know, things that came up in the survey. There was a little bit of interest, but it wasn't, wasn't a big deal. Um, it had been. The, the language of the conservation easement was such that it wasn't clear that it was allowed. TPO and VHCB decided to clarify that, make sure it is explicitly allowed. So there's some changes in the, the terms of the conservation easement. Um, to, to that end. There's a separate section in the stewardship plan, um, which is the, the section of recommendations that. The stewardship committee discussed at May and, um, you know, essentially setting policy. Our, our proposed policy going in is that overnight camping is not allowable for us. Subject to further review. Our, our sense is if somebody wants to come forward with a proposal and explain how, um, you know, how and why it's a good thing, you know, why they want to do it. Um, how and why it's not going to cause problems with the rest of the terms of the conservation easement, how they want to manage it or how they could be, you know, managed. Um, without being a burden and a drain on the resources, we're happy to consider somebody's proposal. Um, and make adjustments at the time, but, but as of now. Um, we don't see any reason to open things up for camping. So. This change in the concept, the terms of the conservation easement is, you know, immaterial. At the moment, it just means that we're open, the, the, the conservation easement allows it in the future if somebody wants to come forward with that idea. So that's the, the second major change. The third thing is there's a bunch of sort of typographical cleanup. There's places where it's, um, you know. You have seven hundred and forty acres and say seven hundred and thirty-four or it's, or vice versa or something. You know, a couple of other things. There's a place where there's a clause about existing recreational trails and which. Um, was, is mentioned in paragraph six and taken out of paragraph eight, something like that, but it doesn't, it doesn't actually change the meaning. Um, you know, a few other things like that. So, so those are the changes. I know Kate sent, uh, Hayden sent a copy a week ago. I don't know if you've had a chance to, to read it or not. Our request is that you give it your stamp of approval tonight.
Michelle, we pick up on one thing. Let me go back and look through the finding.
Stop on, it's either page nine or eleven, just refer to the future.
Okay. Um, yeah, right. Um, let me.
I mean, if you want to take it out, I can take it out right now.
Yes.
Um, if, if. You have it in front of me?
Uh, let me see. I don't have it right in front of me that I can get to it real quick.
Can we just say a lot of back and forth again?
Yeah. Fine, very good. Should I say page eleven?
I have nothing else to say.
Future, okay, yeah, page eleven. Um, are the projects funded? This, this is about the Horic, um, that was, yeah, okay. Um. Let me see. This is a PDF document. I can't make the change directly on my document.
We can do it in a minute.
Yeah, let's do it in a minute. Okay. Let's change it.
So I'll make a motion that we amend the. Forest plan and conservation easement on page eleven. To remove uh, the word future from the rail trail. Say on the paragraph.
It's, it's the last paragraph on the page.
Last paragraph on the page.
Yeah. In a section of Horic Trail is right.
Second.
I'll second it.
Richard second that. Did you get that data?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Preparing, so we've amended the. The forest plan and the conservation.
This, this is the uh, forest stewardship plan. Just amended. And then I guess the second thing would be to accept all of the other changes as, as presented in the red file.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Richard's made a motion to announce seconded to um, approve the um. Stewardship plan is amended. For the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Pairing.
Very much.
Thank you for your hard work.
That's, uh, yeah, I love that. There's many hands going into this, um, so. We'll, um, we have some celebration to do.
Okay, moving on to the improving communication discussion. So you're up, Mike.
Oh, hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so I think that there should be more communication to the people in our town, uh, regarding voting. Um. I know that not a lot of people turn out to vote and I think that we should have more signage and. I would like to put up some signage on, uh. Town properties if we could, uh, regarding upcoming voting and dates. For people who aren't on Zoom and all that kind of stuff. Um, we need more outreach all around. It's not good enough. You have. Five people at this meeting from our town. So.
Anyone's welcome to come. We have them every. First and third of the month. We've had it for years, so, um. All right. So I, Deb, I'm assured Deb is taking that down in our minutes for ideas, um. To prove. Now, you're just talking about votes. So, you know, saying communicating with our residents, just voting is important.
I mean, all, all around, you need more communication. It's obviously not good enough. Most people aren't participating in these events and these meetings in the committees. And the voting is horrendous. You had a sixteen percent turnout last time on the, the wastewater. That is horrendous. You had one little sign up at the end of school street for one day. We can do better than that. This is a democracy. And I believe our people deserve better than that. I'm going around house to house to inform people about this because you aren't.
Yeah, you're not informing them of the right things though, I'm afraid. Like some of the stuff that's coming.
I'm informing them of the revote. That's what I'm doing. And you aren't.
Uh, Monica? I attend Zoom meetings on, on most select board nights when I can. Um, I'm not usually here, but I had to come back, pick up myself. Um. I, I believe that it is the onus of the citizen. Being thought about their government. I believe. That it is my responsibility to find out. What is happening in town. And that is why I come to these meetings and why I attend the meetings online. Because when I attend these meetings, I know what's going on in town.
My observation is people learn more from being at the meetings than listening to the rumors in town. Because sometimes you have inaccurate information spread. You can easily snail mail something, toss it off Belinda for a committee. Read and reply back to you. There's email. You always kind of a meeting, but there's lots of other alternatives that if you can write a letter, you can get your message to someone. And they can get to a committee. Wanting them to zoning, write them a letter, give it to Belinda. They can get it to the committee to go address it. And if you give your address, send an answer back. Give them by slow mail or drop it off or something. There's many ways to do it. It all depends on what much time does the person want to put in. It's not like you can tax or. Worst case, put a gun to someone's back, make them go vote. That's not democracy. That's kind of what it's kind of saying is, what you're kind of saying is you want to put a gun to everyone's back to make them vote if they don't want to vote. They have the option not to choose the option. Can't force that on people. Ronald Green box, you have to give them the opportunity to do it at their own choice.
They're making their choice.
You know, I, uh, Mike, I want to say that I was really glad to see you around the agenda tonight and, and this, this coming up for discussion. Um, I, I, I think it's a really important puzzle. And I'd love to see more, uh, participation and kind of communities, uh, you know, just community engagement in the towns. Uh, voting on, on the ways that select boards, um, allocates the budget. On things that, you know, affect our property taxes and so forth, then on the future of what happens in our town. Um, I'd love to, to see more public discussion around that. Um, and so I've been watching this whole discussion with interest. Um, and, um. Uh, you know, while, while I personally am in favor of the town wastewater, I'm delighted to see more engagements. And more, just more discussion around it. One of the things that I'm aware of is that. The, the discussion for the wastewater, for instance, has been going on for six years and more. The Moana County Planning Commission has been in place for a long time. Nobody's, nobody's trying to keep this stuff secret. Fact is that, you know, it's definitely boring for the most part. Um, when we first started having town forest committee meetings, um, we got the sixteen committee members and, you know, a dozen or so. Interested members of the public for a couple of meetings and it, it tapered off pretty rapidly. Uh, and honestly, you know, there's, there's a lot of times if I didn't have to take two hours out of my Thursday night to be there, I've got other things I'd like to do. I think sixteen percent voter turnout is, you know, I agree, it's, it's kind of dismal in a sense, but also. I think it compares actually probably favorably with, um. The turnout on a whole lot of other local municipal kinds of initiatives. It's, it's a matter of, um, how do we actually get people interested in this stuff? So, you know, Mike, again, I just want to say I'm, I'm, I'm glad you're bringing it up. And, uh, I'm, I'm psyched to see the kind of energy that you're bringing to it. Um, what I would like to see happen is for more forms of community discussion around what do we want in this town. Right? Um, the, the things, again, Mike, the things that you brought up about whether or not we should even have a town here in the floodplain. That's just, is an interesting question. Um, the fact is, we had a town here in the floodplain. Um, and maybe we should be talking as a, as municipality, what do we want to do about that? Um, so getting more discussion going on it again, I'm, I'm excited by it. Um, I, but I, I just want to say, I think that, um, you know, having expectations of a much higher turnout. Doesn't seem realistic because I, I just think a lot of people have a lot of other, you know, more interesting stuff, that stuff that they find more interesting. To do with their lives than to dig in and track all of the stuff and, and actually get to the answers. So if you have a solution for that, then I'm all ears.
Karen?
Uh, it's me, Karen, Mike. I think what you're doing is wonderful, um, and the idea of getting people involved. Yeah, they have things to do, but what you keep saying, what people keep saying over and over again, and nobody seems to be hearing it. I hear it is they may not have internet. They may not have transportation. Um, what you're doing and what I did when I did with the petition and now I didn't get people to the, to the voting. Was a long turnout, but you know, and I, and I was called names by different people. Uh, that I was being disrespectful to the board for doing the petition, which I don't think is being disrespectful. But I think what you're doing is getting town involvement and you've got, uh. You gotta do like the presidential election. You've got to get out there and you've got to talk to people, whether you get them to vote or not. But then you've got to look at the budget. You can do this with the budget and spend this. Maybe you should be spending it on sending out ballots and stuff. We, we spend enough on other things. Um, a friend of mine died a year ago and I was with her up until a couple of hours before she died. We've kind of gone separate ways about how we felt about this town and there was some backstabbing going on and I got blamed for something that she did. That had to do with a letter, but that's neither here nor there. She apologized and I have big shoulders. But the thing about it that she said to me was, you know, I used to be involved with this whole group in Mulkat. That, that, uh, was called Make It Better. And what it was, was a bunch of people that decided, well, this person should be on the select board and this person shouldn't be on the select board and. And, you know, they were, they were the right type of people apparently. And she, she said to me. Two years before she died and then, and she was dying before she went into her coma. She said, you know, that kind of stuff in Mulkat needs to stop. What, what needs to be going on is in town involvement. You go out to their homes, you include them, you talk to them. Some people have the time to do that. Some people don't, but it's a community and it means let's get out there and get involvement. Send them ballots, get out and talk to them about what's going on. You can have your emails. You can have your front page forum. A lot of people don't operate that way.
The only risk I can foresee is everyone coming up, eventually what I see. It's going to be very hard if you don't because I can see Medicare and everyone dropping all paper off the planet. Because they're going to save money with the way, with all the new people that don't want to do paper. Everyone's going electronic if we like it or not. And that's what, and it's also easier for state and everyone else to do their business. Must see a lot less paper because it's also all to save the environment. You put less stuff. They're going to do that too.
Oh, I'm for the environment. Don't get me wrong. I'm for the environment. I'd like to see this river clean up, but we won't go there right now. But what I'm saying is you've got to think about the people and what they need. I can tell you some stories about how you wouldn't want it on the board, but I won't. Yeah, because we don't have like this here. Okay, I Roger has a hand though.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. I noticed, you know, from the very first town meeting I attended, that this conversation, um, was pretty live then about. You know, making decisions based on the number of people that were present. And my observation, I pretty much go to as many of these things as I can. Um, it hasn't really been hard to find a schedule of events coming up. All the agendas are always posted on the bulletin board. You know, there seems to be like a consistent, uh, way of doing things that satisfies the state requirements. But I do respect that, you know, we want to do better as a town. We do want to get more people here because it's important to get the, their opinions. And their, their voices heard. Um, but. If we do bring in a paper system, you know, just saying like, oh, Meli- Belinda will take care of it is kind of a throwaway statement. You actually have to. Consider how much time and how much cost is going to add and make sure that it's accommodated for in the budget in terms of the, the, the time, materials, postage and labor. Um, and also an anticipated schedule for these things. It's, it to, it needs a little bit more, um, development than to just say, oh, someone else will take care of it. And, uh, I don't want to presume that, um, anybody in the office, um, has any time because I really don't have any insight on anybody's. You know, expectations, uh, throughout the week. So if it is something that, you know, we need to carry forward with the cost of it has to be. Incorporated into the budget and the town will have to approve the addition of that. Um, and that does, I think, tie into what Alan was saying as well. So, all right. That's all I had to say.
Um, I agree that we do need better communication in this town. There's no argument between the, from that. Um, personally, I'd like to find ways to help with that. Um, but. I. Will say that. The board does a lot and they are volunteers and I hate to think of putting more on the shoulders of these people. Um. So. We need solutions that we don't have yet. Um, the other thing I want to say, and I, I guess I will go all the way back to four years ago when I moved here. Um, I stopped going to town meetings after a few years because of the hostility that comes out sometimes. In people when they're very passionate about issues. And I think it's very important for us to find ways to communicate respectfully with each other. I know that. I often. Do not speak out. When I'm speaking in a room full of, with a number of angry people, I feel like it silences my voice. Because I don't, I'm not a fighter. And so. I would recommend that as we move forward, we, we talk about norms for how we have. Respectful civil conversations with each other, even when we don't agree.
So now, um, I just started thinking about statistics and polling and those sorts of things. And how we can have an idea of what people. In a voting block might actually want. And we talked about margins of error. So obviously. The more people vote, the lower the margin of error on a topic. And just because sixteen percent of the voters voted doesn't mean that the ratio would lay off. What the decision would, would have been. And, uh, of course. Getting more people out to vote, hundred percent, we should do that. Um. Just because sixteen percent of the vote. It does not mean that the, the decision was way off necessarily. So that's just. Thinking about statistics in that case and the margins of error and. I'm pretty sure that wastewater vote was a fairly large mark on.
It's satisfied. That's up there with the town forest vote, I guess.
Yeah, so that's, that's in, that's in my mind too. So. A lot of people that are for it and vote, a lot of people that are against it and vote, and that ratio may, I mean, I guess we'll find out. It's a, that's, uh, something to keep in mind too.
We just want to join.
Hey, I, I think that we'll stay sixteen percent September unless we get the, uh. Um, the vote out and get people to know about the vote on September tenth. People won't know about it unless you tell them. How are you going to tell them? Posting it in three places in town and one little place in the local newspaper that no one reads anymore isn't going to cut it anymore. That is not good enough. We can do better.
Do, do you have a specific proposal for how to do better?
Well, so much is brought up mailing in, uh, mail-in ballots to everyone, or at least, uh, mailing in letters to inform everyone. That this is happening or any, um, you know, uh. Uh, vote is happening ahead of time to get more people informed about it. I mean, you need, you need to start thinking about better ways of informing people. Most people didn't even know about the wastewater system. You were saying six years. I mean, that's pretty sad. And that sixteen, in that sixteen percent turnout proves it.
And Deb?
Um, just to make the point that we've had even less for town meeting. And town meeting, we have now gone to, um, voting for our officers, um, by Australian ballot, but it still has not increased. Our percentage of turnout. Also, I'd like to point out that the bond vote, we post in five places. We also put it in the paper. I also put it on Front Porch Forum. I also put it on the website. Now, I did put out a sandwich board. I'm not even required by law to do that, but I did do it. Here's the thing, guys. We go by the law. If anybody wants to change the law, then I would say you would have to talk to your legislatures about how they can improve the election system in Vermont. Thank you.
So Michael, thank you for this discussion. Um. You know, we're definitely going to take into consideration some of your suggestions and, uh, work together to see how we can, um. Get the vote out, uh, better for this, um. Upcoming election.
We do follow the law. We are, we are an extric mentality of the state, so we must follow state law. So we, there's certain things that we have to do, like put in the paper newspaper three weeks in a row before the, the posting and so forth. So we met those requirements, but it sounds like we need to try to do more than that. So um, the board uh will come up with ideas or um, make a suggestion to the wastewater committee for better outreach. Yeah, Michelle.
Mike, I have one question for you. When you're out uh talking to people, do you ask them what they would need to see? Do you ask them what sort of communications that they would actually see?
Uh, can you say that again?
When you're out talking to people, you said you've been going door to door. Um, do you ask them why they haven't seen any communication or what they would prefer to see as far as, how do we address people? Do you ask them how we can better address, I mean signage may be seen, but signage is very, if, if you have dates on it. So if we just had a sign that says a special, special town vote, um, you know, go to the town office or something, uh, without having dates on it, that's maybe feasible, but it just to have special signage for every election is so costly.
Um, a lot of the people I talked to um didn't know about it. They're older people. They don't um, they don't really read the newspaper or the little small thing in the newspaper anymore that you, uh, that you have to post. The minimum by law. Um, they don't do the face talk or any of that online stuff. Um, and I did not ask them why, um, or as, you know, um, why they didn't know. I was shocked that they didn't know. I was shocked how many people did not know. I was shocked.
But, but sometimes it is on, the owners, as Monica says, the owners is on public to find out. Now, if they don't read the newspaper and they don't listen to the radio, you know, I, I don't know how to get something across them if somebody's not gonna read. Or you get it.
Something shipped, something shipped in the mail. A lot of them, uh, some people said maybe getting something shipped in the mail. Um, another person online emailed me saying she would like uh mail-in ballots for everyone in town for these special elections. So they are informed and they have the chance to vote, that, the people who are registered voters.
Well, I would say that they are not informed if they know nothing about it and they just wanna vote. So, I'm very leery of that. Informed is a different word meaning to me than knowing about something.
They weren't informed of the wastewater system itself or the vote itself on June eleventh. They didn't have a clue.
I believe the wastewater committee is working on uh letting the town voters know what's going on.
Did I? How hard would it be for the wastewater committee to make up flyer stating what it's, what it's about? Be neutral when the vote is and send it out bald nailed.
Working on that.
It's so cheap. And I mean, a lot of these things could be done by flyers. To let people know, because I don't have internet. I don't have a cell phone. I can't afford them.
We are working on that. So, you know, thinking back to the conversation earlier, where you said the thing would have to be ADA, more ADA accessible and the grant thing, whatever that was, was over. A few years ago, I checked with, well, there was a superintendent passing through the district that I mentioned how, it actually was a principal, how I mentioned how it would be really helpful if we were able to collaborate with the district to, with their phone system, you know, the one where they notify kids and parents of school closures and things like that. So I don't know anything about it, other than you can't reach people with whatever phone they happen to have. So that seems to me like an avenue that we can help people to learn about upcoming things. Thought.
For, I have over time had to stuff many of the dirty bills. And we used to all the time put stuff in there. And you could mail it to people and they still would not read it. A lot of people, you could put something in there, they still wouldn't read it. You needed to mail it to them. It's faster. Then you went to do boil water notices. You go knock on every single door affected by it. You can tell, most, most of the stuff is still on there, because most, no one will answer their door. When you go door to door, and when someone's not home, you'll, there are cases where we have it on there. Three days later, the same one was on the same door and no one had touched it. And they gave no care about it. They're putting it right on the, right on the door, they're going. They didn't get a care for two days.
You're right. We don't answer our phones anymore either, because they're all live and all they're.
It happens all the time, like, all the stuff. It's like when Joe wanna go, if someone busy probably wanna help them, you gotta go knock on their door. People don't answer unless you're outside, you can catch them. If not, no one answers their phone. You put something on their door, even that's hard. Try to place water meter. Like, um, we need a time to change your water meter. Some people, you never get a call from them, because they don't ever wanna do it. Or they don't ever get to you, or you gotta try three times to do it, and you still can't get it. So I change a water meter four times. And you're going door every time posting it. Knocking, like three days in a row and you get nothing.
Something, are the chair bound? I'm just asking. I'm not trying to be a smartass. I'm just saying, it was something Michael and I were talking about one day when I first met him, about the fact that, and by the way, I, I'm not angry. I, I just get really wound up and I did vote for you. My thing is, we were discussing the fact that some people cannot get out and vote, because they can't get out of chairs, be, be, whatever the problem is. And that's why I said that about, if they can get out of the chair, they answer the votes. I know somebody came and listened. I know a few people that can around here, because, you know, I go out and see people. But, you know, he had a good idea about, you know, some people that don't, that are able to move around and can move around, have no right about maybe, you know, along with your thing, using the bus of some type or renting a bus to get the people that don't have transportation to meetings, like, you know.
Volunteer, helpful, that could be.
That, yeah, that, yeah, that too was mentioned. And, because that came back to when I was doing the petition years ago. Somebody was like, well, why don't you just, she's being very sarcastic, but she said, why don't you just rent a van or a bus and go pick them up? And it was like, well, let's tell Michael about it. He goes, you know, that is a good idea. And I'm like.
Probably get a lot more people to a meeting than, I would think than.
But then on the other hand, I offered a couple times and I, no, no, I can't do that. I gotta, I gotta get my lawn mowed. Um, yeah. So obviously, it wasn't that important to you to go vote. The lawn.
Okay, I'm gonna thank everybody in this conversation, because the agenda, we need to move on. But um, it's been a good conversation. I've enjoyed it. Um.
Yes, I apologize before I was being lost. I was, no, I get well, I didn't want to interrupt the party. No, I, I was like, I just wanted to know that some of us were forty, you know, don't vote for that guy, because you're okay. And the cat's over there. He has to be adorable. I want to picture. I was gonna ask where he was, but he's there. And I have to go, my dog is not there. Spare her dog.
Thank you. We need a picture of him. Hi, Kay. Kay, we brought a moved on. I'm, I'm already.
Okay, um, did you, did you go over the um community forest stewardship plan with Roger or Jack? Or are you all set or do you need me? Sorry about that.
I think we're set here, Kay. This is Gordon.
Oh, good. Hi, Gordon.
Yeah, we went through the, we went through the changes. Um, the board had no questions. They've approved it. Um, they, uh, Michelle, our new town administrator, uh, select board administrator, found one more typo. Um, that we should correct, um, which is a reference to the future of the Mauna Valley rail trail. Um, so the select board specifically called out that change and, and requested to be made. Um, but otherwise, the, the plan is approved.
Great. And Linda, um, the change, the easement about allowing a potential hut in the future, um, and any other of the closing documents that went to your attorney, is that, do we wanna talk about that later or we all good with that?
With that.
I thought I responded. Yeah, we're all good.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks again. Sorry.
Alright, okay.
And uh excited to share with the rest of the select board that uh we're closing on September fifth. So I know it's been a, a long process and we're, we're thrilled to be able to hand this property over to you in just a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kay.
Project managers for Florida.
Uh, hi. Um, yeah, I think between um a few activities we've been involved with, um, we have still been able to keep a focus on FEMA and um the federal highway as well. Um, I can report that uh federal highway um has closed out the two grants that we had open. Um, those are for fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And um that money has been received by the town of Wilkett. Um, that was uh re, uh, for the uh, uh, Pond Road uh Bridge and the other was for uh North Wilkett um at uh four-wheel drive. Um, the bigger news is that things are moving forward with FEMA. Um, I think we reported a while back that um I thought there would be a good target date of Labor Day. Um, and it looks like that that may very well be the case. Um, if not, then a little later in September, but not much more than that. We did receive um eight hundred and sixty uh thousand dollars for the culvert on the Town Hill Road. Um, so that is an obligated um dollar amount, um eight hundred and sixty thousand. Um, in addition to that, we are going to have some supplementary funds for that project that we're billed under the uh Town Ri, Town Hill Road itself, rather than just the culvert. Um, and that is for approximately another hundred thousand. Um, so that's gonna put us pretty close to a million dollars. Um, that will be obligated for uh the Town Hill Culvert. Um, the obligation has occurred for the eight hundred and sixty thousand, so that has been forwarded to the state. And uh we should be expecting a check uh compensation from the state um shortly. Uh, I don't know how long it took last time, but it did seem to turn around pretty quickly.
We have to complete the project before they're gonna give us the money, don't they?
Um, not in this case, no.
So we have not, okay, but we have not received the grant agreement yet.
Okay, right. Okay, that's the next step. Right. Um, the uh, the other projects are all starting to move forward. Um, that includes uh, uh, the, the mitigating product, projects and uh what the work is being done um on Jones Road. Um, uh, some of the slides that happened on East Hill Road. Um, and also Town Hill Road. Uh, then the bulk of the um activity around the roads. Uh, so we had sixteen roads that were grouped together and that has moved forward to CRC. Um, and that CRC tends to be the next uh step where questions are asked. Uh, there's a lot of back and forth. Um, but once it gets past CRC, it gets to obligated pretty quickly. Uh, and that should be another eight hundred thousand. So we'll be hitting the two million dollar mark um right around Labor Day. Um, I still have a lot of confidence in that.
Is it really gonna cost a million dollars to, to put the culvert in in Town Hill?
Have you seen that culvert?
It's huge, yeah. But I haven't seen what it's gonna be yet. I know what it, what it is.
It's huge.
Okay. So it is a million dollars.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of big work.
You gotta, you gotta put it in, you gotta put wings on it, you gotta cover it. It's gonna cost some to put it in.
Oh, we need easements, some lawyers, a survey. You know, move the utilities. Move the utilities.
Yeah, it's a pretty sizable, pretty sizable project. And it should come in just around a million dollars. Yep.
Fifty-four hundred dollars just to, to, one ball, one fall.
Well, thank you very much for your, it's been.
Yes, yeah, as soon as we get settled, um, I'll start pushing a little harder on.
Actually had a discussion with Senator Welch's office today. They called and they're gonna be meeting with FEMA and try to push them a little faster.
Yeah, I've been, I've been following the governor's press releases. Um, it seems like the two-one-one is just not sizing up. Uh, but I know that Welsh and, and Bernie are both pushing for it. So I sure hope it does go through.
Uh, regarding FEMA buyouts, um, is uh everything proceeding smoothly with Westover property? Is, is that a done deal?
I actually received four o'clock today, the title search on that. It's been sent to the uh state for review and then we'll have the closing.
Do you have a, a date, uh, anticipated date for the closing?
Well, um, I need to reach out to the attorney and send a date.
So they.
So I have to hurry up and get things together.
Uh, but it's, um, is it possible that might be done um by September fifth when we have the closing on the forest?
The way he wants.
Okay.
I can say it's like Christmas.
By Christmas? Okay. You're lying. Okay, but uh.
Yeah, like, right.
Yeah, the town forest look an extra eighteen months, but I don't know why the, why this one would be given. Thanks for the update.
Then my, well, really by the end of the year, it needs to close. And we need to demolish everything on that property.
Is that, and is that demolition funded by the FEMA buyout?
It'll be something that will be put out there.
Excellent. Thanks for the update. Thanks for your work too.
Yep.
Gonna move on to um the select board administrator assistant board. So Michelle's only here about three or four days, but never mind, I think. Time, just trying to give everything out, so it's together. My head's still not together. Um, but I've been working with Bob at facilities. I pulled together sort of a routine maintenance task list for him as well, special projects. And um, it's on his desk. If you ever have anything that we need to add to it, it's, it's there. Um, he is working on getting the generator repaired. It's, it's been scheduled, it's gonna be scheduled, but they're just awaiting uh part two arrival. So we'll get that uh boil on off switch fixed shortly. Um, in October, Bob is gonna be uh taking out the bucket loader from the town to install the nine, nine-one-one signs, because then you can use the, the bucket loader to ram it into the ground. I think then he'll get a better installation, because the couple of the signs that he has installed, uh, I mean, it's hard, that's hard work to sink that into the gravel outside the road if you're doing a ban. So, he is top of the town. Trion is gonna, is going to assist him in the in, installation. Helps to install thirty to forty a day using that. We have about seven-hundred-and-sixty-ish signs left to install. So that's going to start happening in October once they don't think that they need the bucket loader. So that's his plan in fact, for the signs. I mentioned that they should be done. I mean, it was a new town plan, we hope to get them done before November, before that closing. I attended the Remount League of Cities and Towns training this morning for the Highway Team Management Program. It's a free training. I just wanted to sit in on it, um. Thought it was going to talk about something a little different than what they did, but they did talk about that term of staff and legal issues and things like that. But, uh, they did give us, they did provide a lot of information and now we have a contact that we can call for any HR legal issues at the, um, Remount League of Cities and Towns. This week, we've already had two ordinance issues, one dog, two, two dog, actually three ordinance issues, two dog-related and one health-related. So I just met with both Dean and, uh, Bourbon on those issues, just to kind of become familiar with them. And in the meantime, I filed, uh, for an issuing officer number so that I can begin to write complaints because Kurt, you have an issuing officer number as does Dean. But since you're not here, Kurt, I just filed for one myself. So that you could issue complaints.
I couldn't hear you were-
Oh, you had the, you are an issuing officer for the Vermont municipalities?
Yes, I am. Even though I'm not there, yes, I am. Uh, yeah, so that was, uh, for ordinance enforcement, uh, which includes the, uh, dog and animal enforcement.
Yeah, so they are now, the state, it says, state judicial bureau is going to issue me a number. So we had that handled.
Oh, so you'll be, you'll get a number then, right?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, good.
And I got your number as well because we didn't know who was on there. So we have a list and we found out it's just Dean and Kurt at the moment. They're for the roads, I met with Dylan and I, and, um, he and I are going to meet on Tuesday for an hour at least. I pulled together the maps and the, and the road databases. So I wanted to know what the hydrologically connected segments are. So I mapped just, uh, those maps and then the database is behind those maps. And so we have nine-hundred-four roads. I think two-hundred-and-thirty odd roads are hydrologically connected. And then the database shows the status of those and then the prioritization of those. And so I want to meet with Dylan so that we can, um, just figure out what's been done. Because the planning commission will work with us on one of those grants, we, um, grant new, grant new. They will upload the segments for grant needed, but I'm going to meet with Adam Jones to make sure we how to actually get online and update the other segments as we address them. Plus, I want to know, I've asked Dylan if he thought it would be a good idea to have a one-year, a two-year and a three-year plan for road improvements. And so we're going to try to start tracking that out so that it would be better for the budgeting cycle to get into the, the sort of planning. And I know that always changes with flooding, but we can keep updating the database. And then finally, the town of Woket has received five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and twelve cents from the National Opioid Settlement that Kurt filed. And that was settlements from Tiva, Alogent, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart. I, it, it didn't, I couldn't find the grant in, in any information, but I went online and the general guidance online said that eighty-five percent of those settlement funds must go toward the abatement of the opioid epidemic. So then I spoke with fire chief Jim Fulton and he said that he could, we could use the eighty-five percent of the funds and, and purchase Narcon for the stage. He's looking and asked him if we should purchase it all at once or if the shelf life is three years for anything that you purchase now. And for roughly sixty dollars, you get two units. Um, and so we could easily then purchase sixteen units of the spray or does he want us to purchase ten units? I'm just not sure. So Jim's with the answer to that. Um, I would like to, to ask the board how you would like to use the remaining fifteen percent of those funds, which is eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. I would recommend that we use it, that we retain it or add it to the general fund just for the infrastructure of the settlement. Or we could actually put it into purchasing all of Narcon and we would get roughly eighteen units.
What about doing something for posting? Stating that we have that available? So if someone wants to call because there's a, a need? Because I don't know how fast fire rescue or even more still rescue is. When I was on the fire department, we were much quicker.
But we're not here.
They, they would just be able to get hold of the fire department. If they're going to have it, then you should get hold of them, you see what I'm saying? And they can respond quicker. Right, but then dispatch would tell them there's a need at a certain house. They don't have to say who, just certain bad traps.
So, uh, how, so how would, would you do yourself, sponsor?
I, just for hosting.
Hosting, well.
Hosting like signs, like, you know, put a sign written, Ben's saying that five places, you know? What about posting?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think we should take all the funds and put it into the Narcon and then cover this cost. The gas. Personally. There's a lot of things in there to go see. It's, it's a choice.
So I think we can make a, a flyer that we can post around town for but that's a good communication idea.
I mean,
I'm not very good at making flyers. I don't know if Michelle is, but we could find somebody. Yeah, um, and so we should, should host it around.
It, it, it would just allow people to know that it's available because time is of the essence here. I mean, if it's ten minutes just for a hard rescue, we get the crew there to do get it and then dispatch now through. And we could have someone from the fire department do it within five minutes, may save a life.
So then still call nine-one-one?
Yeah, right. And then dispatch would tell the fire department.
Are, are, are we bypassing any regulations that dispatch would have? So maybe just call, I would call dispatch and say, you get enough phone calls and to contact the fire department. I'm just not sure how.
Right, we would.
You might, yeah, you might call them and write a letter just saying that we're purchasing it for the fire department. If you get a call, you know, nine-one-one call, it's here, maybe?
I just had a thought because I know the town of Johnson has a vending machine.
Yeah.
Right, that anybody can go to, to get it. Like they know it's there at all times. And then put something like that, I don't know, a fire management needs to be or something like that. But you know, like a little vending line or this.
Yeah.
What if there was just a little encased, maybe in glass, you have to break the glass to take it? And let somebody come get it in an emergency and then you deal with the glass the next day. I think just write on the town, write on the town apple. Just, it's just an idea, just something that popped into my head, thinking of that vending machine in Johnson.
There are other towns that have tried different strategies that like, uh, recommendations. But one of the things I'm hearing is this idea, that idea about a flyer, you know, that could easily evolve into a newsletter that could be available. Short newsletter. No, no, for eighty-two dollars, a miscellaneous thing, you know what I mean? You know, for just town information.
Oh, I see.
So that's something to think about for the future. Will it be distributed with, I don't know, I don't know. Just, just an idea that maybe it can grow.
Maybe something we want to put into our town report.
Yes, I thought about that. At least put a flyer in the town report.
My only concern that we set it like Dylan set it into a place where it can be available. Sixty dollars a shot, someone could break the glass and pop it over there. Where here, the fire department has it, it's controllable.
You just need to remember like Jim's right out, Jim's out tonight doing the cleanup, so he's not here. I don't know.
I don't know the fire department well, just know how quickly they can respond.
I don't know.
Response, when I was on, it was a four-minute response.
Yeah, that, no, 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 it's new people.
No, it's still pretty close. When you got Steve, that Jim, it's still within three or four minutes.
You can't even get him to be an emergency manager. I think it's worth asking. I, I think it's worth doing some more research in finding out, asking Jim what, what the response time is and is it, is there another place that might be better to have some too?
Are there, are there first responders in town other than Jim?
No, I don't think we have any first responders anymore. We used to.
I mean, my Jim.
Yeah.
Just wondering if it's like, why is it, so if they keep it with the fire department, then they might not want to keep it at the fire department? So that it's really first responders around town.
You might ask Jim for, I think this is worthy of, of the conversation. Do you want to ask Jim his thoughts, if he has some thoughts on it?
I, I can ask.
You know, maybe he knows from other towns or something, so are reinventing those deals or what, what seems to work?
I think it's the main one, only know from the rescue squad.
Right.
I, I do know that a lot of times when those calls come in, it's already been dealt with by the time they get there.
I know.
It's around.
Now, larger town would have a police force, but we don't, our police isn't the best. Unless they're in town.
Be really bad if you were me.
Yeah.
I think we can revisit this at the next meeting, see what I can find.
I have another question. Does Dylan have a culvert plan? Dylan have a culvert plan on replacing a culvert?
See, I don't, no, I mean, there are the maps, um, A and R has maps of, there are culvert mapping, um, and bridges. I just have to sit down with Dylan and he has to like do a brain dump so that I can figure out really where it's not good enough time.
I guess, uh, it's like a solid one.
Of our codes and standards, there's one of the things, it's required to have a culvert inventory and the conditions of those culverts. Whenever they're replaced, it's supposed to go in there and be upgraded. I think ours is coming due. I think I asked Dr. Alex three, three months ago about the idea of looking for a grant to, to, uh, update our culvert inventory. It's a requirement. I forget which, what, what we require out of the floor.
Steve would just go out and check the status of each and then.
So it's actually, you know, you get like a municipal planning grant and someone goes out and looks at all, every single forest and craves them.
That's not, that would be bad enough.
Well, yeah.
That's-
No, in key terms, would not do our town. We would be responsible. It has been done, but it's over. I think it's past its time.
If it, if the rest of the north Woket culverts, like the one in front of my house, it's got it's much metal pulling up all the north Woket road and it was this bullshit. How many more are to fall on the rest of that road that we really should know about if we have to fix them? There's a lot links on that road. How many more? Those are all original back when they put that in. That's not good.
Well, if they're rusted out and underneath, you're not doing any good. We'll get more of the same of what we had as to why.
Yeah. Probably under size too.
Or you could have vehicles dropping up there, up the road. Which is incredible.
One of those forms that we get in the spring now or remember and ask you if you have a current culvert inventory. We have a culvert inventory, but it's out of there. It's something we need to have updated. It's not something Dylan can do. If he would get a grant or a consultant to.
What we have to do is just really know every culvert that we have replaced in the last three years, maybe. As long as it's been here, I just have to get that out of its head. And I'll do some sort of database so that we can start from there.
Right. So Select Board review in action, um. One is, uh, I'll bring up the adjustment that, uh, Jim has asked, uh, the board to approve allowing for coin drop on August thirty-first and September first with the fire department. Motion to-
I'll make a motion. One second.
For the discussion about that. None of those in favor?
Alright.
Both preparing. I wanted to let you know that we, um, talked to about the six thousand dollars, um. Cemetery culvert.
Cemetery. Culvert.
Right. So the cemetery culvert on Volc is, um, that got really banged up in the flooding.
Did it damage the culvert or just cut wire?
Uh, Belinda? Ask Belinda to look into it.
So the culvert is kind of bent on the end and all the dirt on the left side of the road going into the cemetery, the dirt is gone. You can kind of drive a little over to the right in order to get in and people have been doing that. But I did get Clover Town did call me and asked me when it was going to be fixed and I told her we were working on it.
This is my question. It's Kurt, you still there? So, um, so my question to Belinda was, please go and take some pictures. So we know, you know, when we have it. That is a town cemetery.
Right.
My other question was, would our insurance cover that? Or is that a project that we should wait for our, um, if it gets a declaration, could we file that with FEMA for the twenty-four flood?
Yeah, I think if it, if, uh, it is declared, yes, we could, we could claim that through FEMA. yes, we could, we could claim that through FEMA, um, but I can go ahead and uh, discuss the claim with the insurance first, um, that doesn't hurt anything to do that. Uh, so we can move forward with that, just in case FEMA doesn't, uh, doesn't come through.
Well, I think I've already asked Belinda to do that, did you do that at all, talk to our insurance?
So I sent an email to Vicky Abear.
Uh huh.
She said, is it just laying, or was there vandalism? So I told her it was happened with the flood. She was gonna look into it, but she did not think it was covered.
Okay, so, uh, if it's not covered, um, could you tell her we need a letter stating that?
Yeah.
Yep, I can, uh, email her tomorrow.
Yeah, seeing as you're on the cemetery, that's why I'm asking you.
Sure, no problem.
Um, so I guess we, I, I did put it on the list of projects for flooding, um, but we probably should, as a town, think about getting that fixed.
I think they, if the culvert itself is not compromised, it looks like it was just cut already inside of it, water. They really ought to get some Dylan there before somebody gets hung up.
Right.
With their cars picking up the road. My problem is.
I'll send the pictures out tomorrow so you guys can see them.
Okay. It washed out on both sides, it means it's an inadequate size.
Oh, um, it was, well, it was, I guess. I was, it's.
It's only washed out on the left side.
The other side, it's in trouble. It's still, it's, it's not a two-foot culvert.
I couldn't put that big nagel higher.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get the state there for hydraulic study.
Yeah, hy- hydraulic study for.
Culvert in the cemetery.
No, I don't, no.
Either July.
No.
Um, I guess, uh, we'll need to move forward with the, uh, before someone gets hurt, I have a issue, you can talk to Dylan about it, I'm.
Just make the repairs, actually replace the culvert, just to assess.
To look at and assess it.
I, I did ask Dylan to look at it, but I have not heard back from him.
So maybe just to follow up, and just let him know that that is a town, town cemetery, he might.
Did this happen just on?
The town owns it, it's, uh, the town owns it, the town control, it happened in July.
It happened in this last
Yeah.
flood, or, or not, did, did anything happen to it in the original flood?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Because we haven't finished with Gulf Road yet. Um, if there was some damage from the original flood, we could, we could go after it right now.
No.
Doesn't sound like the case, okay.
Okay, so we have the, um, from the lawyer, our bond lawyer for the revote, um, so we have the, uh, Balak. Um, tonight we need to sign the resolution about, uh, having a revote and the warning. Part, um, that needs to be posted. Uh, it's exactly the same article that was voted on, um, on, uh, in June. It's the same, same wording, exactly. Uh, so. And the, um, informational meeting is going to be held September fourth here at six o'clock, uh, as part of the select board meeting. So I reviewed these a couple of times, but you can look at them, uh, but they need to be signed so that we can move forward.
You know what it's about?
Yeah.
And for the birth of.
Pardon? This formula needs to get this warned, it's, she needs to put it in a paper for very re, she needs to get ballots ready for people. I wanted to talk to you about the conservation incident on East Town, um, I couldn't remember if I said that Northern Rivers Land Trust was interest, excuse me, interested in, um, conserving that piece of property by Bear Swamp that we talked about, um, so that all local people could enjoy that property. So their board did meet and they are interested. The, well, it's required to have a stewardship fee of six thousand five hundred dollars. I know that some people up there have, um, said they're more than willing to do some fundraising for that. Be, you know, people that live up there, um. But I think the town would need to vote on this to conserve that land. Uh, my thought was, uh, unless borrowing any, uh, unforeseen thing, that we would put it on the, uh, warning for town meeting. Cause I don't know of any other town meeting that we have before that. So is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to vote on that, or like this?
So. I have an email, um, I would say, but I guess, uh, it's called a local impact grant. Wanted to note the town of Wilket wanted to submit, so I submitted the grant. Uh, it's for twenty thousand dollars. Not quite sure where the money's coming from. But, uh, these funds are not to be spent on any projects that are eligible for FEMA. It can't be used on a FEMA project, it can't be used on a FEMA match for any of those projects. But we can use it on any projects that FEMA is not, um, going to reimburse us for, or for anything else.
First thing that comes to my mind would be the old school.
It could be that, I was thinking, uh, too also of, um, so Kurt, I sent you an email, the Phos road, that culvert that's being replaced um, is a class four road, FEMA is not covering any of that, is, are they?
They are not, no, they're not.
And I asked Dylan how much that, we have to replace that culvert, and it's going to be, uh, about sixteen thousand dollars.
Is this for Phos, Phos road?
Uh huh, well, it said the culvert was eleven thousand.
Linda, in the flood packet there, we have some repairs that was done to Phos road that we have to pay for, for emergency.
Uh, Adam gave us a quote on the Phos road culvert installed that was in the area of five thousand dollars, and the pipe itself, I think, was around eleven thousand. Costs five thousand dollars to install a culvert?
Nah, seems awfully high, and the cost of the culvert seems high as well. Hmm.
Right.
It might be because there's a lot of ledge on that road.
Um, but that was my thought, but Dylan said he thought that, um, they're going to be doing some repair work to the Turcot Road, which is a class four, um, road. That was damaged, um, during the storm and we won't be getting any reimbursement for that, so that was his suggestion. Um, we haven't received the money yet, so, uh, I'm putting it out there, just different ideas.
Someone's thought on the Turcot Road repairs.
Uh, I hear there's a big hole up there at the end.
For the class four and the three, yeah, it's always, always washed out.
Right.
Always.
And class four roads are not reimbursable by FEMA?
Real solution would be to go up onto that class four and dig a big trench. As if the water, when I was up there the last time, comes down through, and then it switches over to the right knee inside and washes. Right, it was a big trench up through, it would stay in that one, that thing inside, line up. But there's so much ledge.
Let's say there's a ledge.
Lot of ledge.
Ledge.
I'm going to, uh, uh, table the at-ready contractors, that was Michael's thing, and he's not here tonight. I do have, um, an email I received to, uh, yesterday, Monday, um, from Senator Welch, uh, on behalf of Senator Peter Welch, I am pleased to report that the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on the Interior, Environment and Related Agencies has approved one million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five aggressively directed spending for the town of Wilket, project town of Wilket, community wastewater. Uh, while this is good news, this is only one step in the process of passing the congressional direct spending request. The Senate and House need to agree on the budget, um, to become law, which usually happens in the fall. So we're still moving forward with additional funding, um, in that application.
Okay, I have one question. I was reading through this, where does it say anything about the percent of payback? What's, what's it gonna cost percentage wise on this? On a lot.
Well, we're not gonna borrow any money because we don't need any, so when we, when we warned the bond vote, we needed a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something. In between the time of the warning and the vote, we received another one point four million from the state to cover all the costs. So we didn't need to borrow any money, but because it was already warned, we had to vote on that. When it was warned. Uh, so as it stands, we do not need to bond.
That still doesn't tell me what the percentage would be available for the payback.
Well, we don't know until you go to the bond batch, but, but we're not borrowing anything, so we don't even ask questions.
And are you saying that this potential thing that's Welch mentioned is another million?
Yes. And we actually have three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars already granted to build the system with a thirty percent contingency in place.
So why do you need approval from the people of Wilket? If you already have all your funds in place, why do you need us to approve it?
Well, it's the time when we warned, we, we have that final going there.
So are we on the hook for any future, I mean, cause you know, forty dollars a month times thirty houses is like twenty thousand bucks a year. So are we gonna be on the hook financially for this a hundred years from now, two hundred years from now? Because we approved it? Even though you already have the funds for it?
Uh, you aren't, but the people in the village are. So the people in the.
But we're approving it with the town vote.
Yeah.
With our approval, we're tied to it, aren't we?
We're all one town. So. So the only people that are gonna pay are the people who are going to hook on to the system. Other than, you will see in the select board's budget. It will cost, um, taxpayers money because the town office, the town hall, the fire station will have to hook on, they will have to pay the user fee. That's on all people outside of the village will have to pay.
I saw the, uh, floodwaters from la- uh, three weeks ago, and that's more than thirty thousand dollars a year. So I don't know where your, you know, fifty dollars a month.
What, what floodwaters, and what does that have to do with money?
In the path of where you want to put this, it's in the floodplain, it just got flooded out for the third time in one year. And you say you guys only need forty dollars a month from these people, which some of them are on a fixed income. And many of them don't even need the wastewater project because their, their septic's are just fine.
I believe they are gonna need it.
This is for three properties in town.
This is not what we're discussing now, we're signing the warning. You can come to the informational meeting on September fourth.
I'm gonna get a lot of people to do it.
Huh?
I'm gonna get a lot of people to come to that meeting.
I hope so, because then they'll be informed, right? That's what we want, we want them to come, and we will be doing a mailing to let them know about that.
Personally, I hope that the conversation can be respectful and not angry tone.
And you need a moderator?
Maybe.
Right, maybe Joe, that's to be the moderator?
I'll be the moderator.
Oh, that is. Oh, no, I make a motion. That'd be adjourned for select board meeting ends. Seven forty-eight, BA, two, I didn't.
Sandbags, would you like to talk to sandbags, I'm sorry.
Do you want to go, Richard?
Same.
You wanna go?
Oh, no, I just thought we'd wait. So.
Oh, I just, I'll be real quick, we have, I'm sorry. Um, so I had a request today from this somewhere across the street about sandbags. Uh, people are really panicking, um, so we did a little research on that, um. I've talked to, uh, Ryan Bierke, emergency management for the town, um, whether it was a good idea or not. I just wanted to throw it out that, um, we can't do anything for this rain coming this weekend. But this is something that, um, for the peace of mind of some people, the board, we have all this extra money around, would like to, um, consider purchasing some bags and uh, policy, and you're getting volunteers to stock some up in the bus barn. I don't know, did you have something to add? It's been a very hectic day, um, we've had people from Preservation Trust and rural Vermont here looking at our schoolhouse to get a grant, hopefully the next step in the grant to revitalize it, so we spent a lot of, I haven't done a lot of research on that, on the sandbags today. But.
Back to you.
I just received a hundred sandbags that I purchased earlier this week, if anyone on School Street would like some, I have one hundred sandbags. I just received a hundred sandbags that I purchased earlier this week. If anyone on School Street would like some, I have one hundred sandbags for them.
How much are you selling them for?
I'll give them away for free.
Oh. Okay, I will, I'll let them know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
That brings up another question. We had signage that would stop people from going through the floodwater by my house.
Well, that's Route fifteen, that's the state. Tim could answer that.
Uh, the the Moore'sville office down in the hill deep.
Well, by the time it floods, you're not able to make it here.
And we have, we have that situation essentially all over town, right? In the big flood of, what was it, ninety five?
Yeah.
Right? We we had this discussion about how do we, can we can we set something up so that we can have like. See things are starting to happen, we could put roadblocks up or something, but we've. We would need a network of people to to do this. Um, if every road, you know, there are people that, you know, like. If prevented the death on on Tower Hill Road that during that washout back then, if we had. Had the foresight to do it, well, maybe we could prevent other deaths in the future. If we can just somehow find a way to collaborate. And again, that idea of coming together and really doing some planning, you know, community planning. Doesn't necessarily have to be worn on the board. I'm not saying put it on the board. I'm saying. Community brainstorming and planning on on how to become a better community. Where we support each other, we look out for each other. Like, how many of us lost our phones um and internet than our, a couple of weeks ago? Right? And um, I. Was driving down the road and I encountered one of our residents out by the road with a sign asking for help because. There was no way for the. Her caller thing to work if she needed an emergency. And so it was totally. You know, unexpected that we would lose our phone for so long.
But we had our nine one one access.
Right, right. Couldn't recall, right, and. So no, so we need, we do need to collaborate as a town. And come up with some plans on how we do communicate better.
Did you think it'd be worth uh calling down to the district? In Morrisville and asking them to um. If they would be willing to uh bring up some signs to for early.
Station for us, yeah.
Yeah. Well, then. The fire station um and you would have them if they couldn't get through or something.
We put up barricades by Morrisville East Avenue. And there were, weren't around in many of them. It was very frustrating.
Well, there's no. No sense of self-preservation for some of these people, to be honest with you. Sometimes you get a little natural selection for rail.
You mean like the guy when I, last time I went down to Hard River enough to see where it was going down? And some guy tried driving across the branch down there.
They should watch the weather and stay home. Uh, they're out looking at the. To see where they could find the worst weather.
Well, but they're also putting your lives in danger.
Right.
Yeah.
And we can't have that, indeed.
Some people are gonna make really poor judgments that it's not anyone's fault. They. I love the old newspaper term, Death by Misadventures. That you, it's too bad you don't use it. It's the kindest way. To describe some of these unfortunate choices.
On a town road, you can put a Jersey barrier up and block that way.
Yeah.
But we don't have jurisdiction on.
Highway.
Uh, how can we put up a Jersey barrier to block fifteen?
You have no right to. The, my thing isn't putting a Jersey barrier, it's saying road hazard, water. At least you warned them, and if they go beyond it, there you go. You can't fix stupid. No, you can't, okay? But at least they're warned. That's my.
So we should go to the Moore'sville's office and ask them for extra time.
Well, I was just gonna ask Michelle to call them up and ask them if they would, if they would um in times, well, you know, flooding, if they. Would be willing to uh bring up some signs that we could put on fifteen.
The other challenge is, like, back in ninety five, when the culvert went out. You've got people asking. Is, can I get through this way? Can I get through this way? And we're down on fifteen doing rescues, and I'm like. I don't know, uh, it might be good, it might be, because if we tell them that you can go that way and they get killed. So I s- I don't tell them because I don't know. There's no way of knowing. Fifteen minutes, it could be good, and then fifteen minutes later, it could be done, so. We would need a lot more than we've got to be able to monitor every situation at the same time.
The incident you're talking about, ninety five, happened like one thirty in the morning.
Yeah, I know.
She was on the way home from the.
Let's not.
They were on the way home from the museum. There's no way of knowing.
Let's not forget Mark. He got out by the skin of his teeth with many injuries too. But there were the search and rescue that had to take place the following day.
All day.
There were many people that volunteered and went out there. But. Again, back to the volunteering and the coming together as community. I think we really, really as a town need to work on that.
But that still comes down to the issue. Somebody's to at least try to travel the roads. Put up the signs. If you don't have the signage.
The water was level with that culvert that, so they wouldn't even tell. And with the rain coming down.
It's still been nice to say.
Yeah.
Closed. And if they were going to dry through it.
Yeah, cause they wanted that way because Route fifteen was flooded.
Right.
Well, we never in 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 our life ever thought that huge culvert could possibly flood. It's just a little road, you know?
Bottom of the shore.
Well, you had three beaver dams that gave out.
That's what we hear, yeah.
Bottom water.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to let you know that I did write a letter to all the School Street Water users telling them that um. We weren't going to abide by the um Old School District's. Policy for the water system, and I also asked them if. They were interested in forming a co-op. I have not heard from them. Anything else?
Yes. I have a propane tank across my, from my house on the rail trail. With no marking. Who do we contact to get rid of it?
A Jackie Casino.
Big thing, yeah. So if you wonder why. Was up there in Hardaway. It's now down here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, from flood. It migrated. It was up by Fisher Bridge. Thanks, Hardaway.
I didn't, I always wondered how that.
Yeah, after Saturday, I'll be down to Moore'sville.
It can't. It's got too much timber around it.
Moving out of there, be there for a while.
I have a chainsaw. I can. Help it. Nothing personal, but pushing along. The porta potty's still there too.
I don't want anything to do with that.
Well, that's been there through three floods.
Well, there's something unique about that.
So I have a phone number.
Okay.
One. Eight oh two, five oh five, eight one nine three. Rail Trail Program Manager, if she, she can at least direct you who to talk to, if she.
I mean, they're gonna have to go out there with a. Hackle. That thing is buried. What's buried? Sort of stuff. Don't, I couldn't find any name on it, because I would've called up the company. It's yours, come get it.
Okay, I don't want answers. I need to see not play the most.
I will. Since he, Mr. Jen's here, what about the Narcan? Let's hit a bird with a rock.
Yes. To ask you, I mean, I'm gonna ask you that. To see Narcan um. So we are gonna be able, we will have the funds to purchase roughly eighteen units um. And we're, we were thinking about uh. Posting a flyer and letting, like advertising around town to let people know that the fire department has the Narcan. But how quickly? So they would still call nine one one and trying to pieces together, but it's, it was still called the nine one one, but we would let the dispatchers know to also. Have call, contact the fire department. But how quickly could you respond? Would it be faster than the nine one one?
It depends on what time of day it would be. Uh, daytime hours of police could probably be faster. It all, it all depends. Give me a time in the day and definitely help out.
So we wondered if there were other options. If there were more than one option for, if we fire it. What should we have more than one option for someone to quickly be?
During the town clerk's office during the day.
Yeah, but it's gonna go to the person. At a location, so.
Each individual.
The sheriffs have them in their.
True, right, but if they're in Eden. Because you never know where they're dispatched.
Right.
If they're in Eden, you're talking.
If it's that serious, they would have some coming from the Harvard though.
Harvard's ten minutes before they can get to their bar.
Oh, but the Harvard police.
That still depends on if they're up in Greensboro.
Okay. I don't know.
We could have a couple people in town. We could have. Uh, we could be twenty minutes away. It's all depends on what time of day it is.
If we had eighteen units, we dispersed those amongst. It's just a thought, amongst each of the volunteer fire departments, so you just have one on you. So you wouldn't have to go, it would be faster.
It'd probably be better to have them at the station. We just split half of them at the station and half of them through the sheriff's department.
We got them purchased up for the sheriff's.
Sheriff's Department already hasn't, but just.
We could keep some here, maybe.
Yeah.
But do we have to be trained to know how to use them? It's just a nasal thing.
Stick it in their nose and scream. It's, yes, there's some.
Do you have to know how to identify it? And who goes?
I think the person would be calling nine one one, so.
There's also the danger of when they come out of it, you have to know how to go and protect yourself.
I'll run it by the uh Murray Rescue. The the crew chief. And we'll go through.
They do have shoplifts in three years, so I'd ask you to.
There's some good residents. Cause we don't wanna go to somewhere where they're uh paying for that. Some consequences.
I made the motion to adjourn.
On the paper, I.
Okay, I. Thank you to the draw.